Louis, your beard is...
Mark said, Mark said.
The number forgot to mention.
Six thirty, could you call the roll please? Yeah, if you wouldn't mind going off this line. It's six thirty.
Did you, oh yeah, turn them on, are they on? Doesn't sound like it.
Hello, hello, could you go ahead and call the roll please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Could you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item C, a proclamation declaring January first, twenty twenty, as Southmore High School Marching Band Day. If you'll come up here, I'll read it. It's a pro- you can hold it like that. Proclamation, get on TV. A proclamation where our Southmore High School Marching Band is a sixth aid program that opened in the city of Moore in August two thousand eight, and during that time has earned numerous awards and honors as well as superior ratings in ensembles and honor band performances. And whereas the organizers of the London New Year's Day Parade were impressed with the sustained excellence in performances of the Southmore High School Marching Band, their accomplishments and their perseverance through adversity. And whereas the London New Year's Day Parade is the largest New Year's Day Parade in the world, annually drawing a straight audience of more than half a million people and a worldwide television audience of nearly three hundred million viewers, with eighty-five hundred performers from over twenty countries. Set in downtown London, the two-mile parade passes the city's iconic landmarks, ending in the famed Harlem Square. And whereas Southmore High School Marching Band has been invited to march in the twenty twenty London New Year's Day Parade, departing from Moore on December twenty-seventh and representing Southmore High School, Moore Public Schools, the city of Moore, Oklahoma, and the United States of America for eight days in the United Kingdom. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Danielle McKenzie, the Vice Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim January first, twenty twenty, as Southmore High School Marching Band Day in the city of Moore, Oklahoma. Do you want to say anything or add anything? Would you like to say something or add anything?
Sure. First off, I just wanted to thank the city for recognizing our students. If I could have a stand, we have some representatives here for me. These are some of our staff and students at Southmore High School. I think they will do a tremendous job representing the city. We're very proud of them. We think they're some of Moore's finest, and we think they're going to be great on the international stage. So, thank you very much for recognizing our kids. And we certainly, not only that, appreciate the work that you do as public servants for our city. It doesn't go unnoticed, so we appreciate that as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Agenda item D, receive an update from CDU with their Regional Transportation Authority Board of Directors regarding regional public transportation.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a little bit odd being on this side of the dais, but I'm honored to be here tonight. Wanted to first thank you for the opportunity to represent you and the citizens of Moore with the Regional Transportation Authority. Brooks asked me to give a brief, and it will be brief, update on what's going on with the Regional Transportation Authority. Just a little bit of history, for some years, you may recall that the city was involved in the RTA Task Force, Regional Transportation Authority Task Force, which Mark was involved with for a few years. This started in twenty fifteen, which was the evolutionary process that led up to the creation of a formal Regional Transportation Authority back in February of this year. February twentieth of twenty nineteen was the actual commencement date of the Regional Transportation Authority. This authority is made up of board members from the cities of Dell City, Edmond, Midwest City, Moore, Norman, and Oklahoma City. And these are the cities that were identified as being the cities that would be affected directly by the proposed routes that had been identified in previous years in various studies for possible future commuter rail service, or some sort of service rail or bus, depending on what it turns out to be. A line from Edmond to downtown Oklahoma City, a line from Norman to downtown Oklahoma City, and a line from downtown Oklahoma City to Midwest City and to Tinker. So, these cities came together formally under state statute that had been amended to allow regional transportation authorities to be formed. And again, this was done, you all as a city council approved a resolution to that effect, and approving the trust indenture for this trust, of which you all have one representative, be in this case, as a board member of this authority. The board members from the various cities, Mark, you'll know some of these names, but Ken Bartlett with the city of Dell City, James Boggs with the city of Edmond, Aaron Budd with the city of Midwest City, myself, Marion Hutchinson, representing the city of Norman. And the city of Oklahoma City has two members, that's Brad Henry and Mary Milan. And Governor, former Governor Henry is the chairman of the authority, which we think will give it a little bit of oomph perhaps that it may need at some point in the future. The first few meetings of the authority, as you might imagine, with anything new was largely housekeeping, kind of getting to know each other a little bit, as it were, setting up bylaws, election of officers, all those sorts of things. And so, once that began to move along pretty rapidly, we really have been getting down to some business, so to speak, over the last few meetings. The primary thing with regard to this is the negotiations with BNSF. Obviously, if there's anything, whether it happens one year or five or ten years from now, that involves rail, BNSF has to be involved. So, there's been a significant amount of negotiations with BNSF, BNSF with regard to the use of its rights of way in the future by, with commuter rail. That's a long way from coming to fruition, frankly, but it's a long process that will be involved with BNSF, with potential legislative changes that may be necessary as a result of that. So, that's an ongoing thing. That's, that's sort of happening behind the scenes at the moment, but it is ongoing. There's a consultant that the RTA uses, has been meeting with them for some time now. Other things that have been done, procurement policy to, that's been developed. We have to make sure that future expenditures, or any expenditure for that matter, meet state requirements and federal requirements and all that sort of thing. Just like you all do, we do as any governmental entity every day of the week. Another very important thing that's happening now is that there is an RFP being put together, which they asked me to chair a subcommittee of our board to do, and I was happy to do that. There's an RFP being put together to refresh, if you will, the twenty fourteen commuter corridor study. And this was the study that identified these three quarters that I mentioned earlier, corridors that I mentioned earlier. It's the consultant's opinion that this study needs to be updated before there can be any federal monies ever approved for construction or anything like that. So, this RFP will be issued probably early this next year. Seeking consultant again to update this study, to look at transit issues, to look at the types of transit that may be available, projected costs, ridership, all those sorts of things. The RTA right now works with and through ACOG. ACOG sort of is the administrative body that we use. The RTA is kind of taking a few steps, like creating its own bank account and that sort of thing, to begin to have a little bit of autonomy. At some point, that'll be important in terms of federal dollars to show that the authority is capable of handling its own issues and spending federal dollars and its own dollars wisely, and that sort of thing. So, over time, the RTA will begin to step up and hire its own executive director. Right now, the ACOG executive director is the acting executive director and that sort of thing. So, at, over time, that will need to be addressed. I think that's really about it. It's, there's a lot of ongoing work. You certainly can visit with me or call me at any time if you have any more specific questions about it. It's not something that's really out in the public probably quite yet, other than general knowledge perhaps of it by, by some folks. But I would say within the next year or two, there'd be quite a bit more information out in the public, looking for, eventually looking for a funding source for the operations of something like this. And this is not a short-term thing. We're in this for the long haul. Other cities, metropolitan areas have done this. It's taken many years to get, to get it implemented, get things constructed, get funding sources available, and that sort of thing. So, just a brief update, be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for serving.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm glad to do it.
How's it being funded right now with the money? Is it off your ACOG?
Each one of the cities has contributed a X amount of dollars, so that's the money that is being, there was about, about two million, a little over two million dollars, all of the cities in total.
And that's the only funding so far?
That's the only funding so far. The city of Moore actually contributed a hundred and twenty-eight, a little over a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars initially. And that funding is being used, there's about, as of December thirty-first, there's about eighty thousand dollars of that, of our portion of it left. So, that money is being used for the administrative expenses to pay the consultant, that sort of thing now. Going forward, I don't know what timeframe, an indeterminate timeframe, there would probably be needed additional funding. I, I can't tell you when. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is a consent docket. Item A, let's even approve the minutes of a regular city council meeting held November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Item B, receive a minutes of a special planning commission meeting held September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Item C, approve the issuance of a fifty-dollar Christmas stipend to employees per council resolution. Item D, accept a ten-foot temporary construction easement for the construction of a sanitary sewer force main from Oklahoma Gas and Electric, OGV, in the southeast quadrant, section thirty-six, Township ten north, range three west, being north of Indian Hills Road and west of Bryant Avenue. Item E, accept a twenty-foot utility easement for the construction of a sanitary sewer gravity main from Sky Lane Rentals LLC located in the north half of Lot four, block one, Sky Lane Industrial Truck, being east of Sunny Lane and north of Indian Hills Road. Item F, accept a variable of the utility easement for the construction of a sanitary sewer gravity main from Sky Lane Rentals LLC located in lots six through ten, block one of Sky Lane Industrial Truck, being east of Sunny Lane and north of Indian Hills. Item G, accept a twenty-five-foot temporary construction easement of a twenty-foot permanent utility easement for the construction of a sanitary sewer gravity main from Mizoli LLC, Brian Forge, located in the southwest quadrant of section thirty-two, Township ten north, range two west, being north of Indian Hills and east of Sunny Lane. Item H, accept a forty-five-foot temporary construction easement and a twenty-foot permanent utility easement for the construction of a sanitary sewer gravity main from Stephen Michael Kenton, located in Lot five, block one of the Sky Lane Industrial Truck, being north of Indian Hills Road and east of Sunny Lane Avenue. Item I, approve an agreement with the State of Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management for the FY twenty twenty Emergency Management Program Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Item J, approve a contact with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, for FY twenty United Planning Work Program. Item K, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY nineteen twenty in the amount of four million three hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Recede the city council meeting and convene a public hearing. Agenda item three is conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and comments regarding the two thousand eighteen consolidated annual performance evaluation report, paper, capital planning, and resilient.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the annual report that is submitted to HUD at the end of each program year. This report is for the two thousand eighteen program year, ending in September of two thousand nineteen. The amount of funds awarded this program year was three hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The projects funded were home-delivered meals for seniors, counseling for sexually abused children, youth counseling, rental and utility assistance for low-income households, and the waterline rehab projects for the north and south Norman Avenue. The total number of residents that benefited from these funds is two thousand sixteen. There's a remaining balance of sixteen thousand forty-three dollars and eighty-one cents of admin costs that will be rolled into the two thousand nineteen program year for the infrastructure project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve.
Do we just, do we accept this?
Randy.
Randy, do we just accept this?
Do we just close the public hearing?
Okay, perfect.
Any other likes to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Agenda item four, hold a public hearing concerning the annexation of certain property in the city of Moore as described in Exhibit A of Ordinance number nine-two-six dash nineteen.
Vice Mayor and Council, due to a issue with the publication of notice, items four, five, and six are companion items, or items four, six, and seven are companion items. We would request that they, all three be tabled.
Do you have a motion?
A motion.
To close the hearings.
To just close the hearing? Okay, perfect.
Second.
Sure, would you call for the vote to close the hearing?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. We'll recede the public hearing and reconvening the city council meeting. Item five is consider approval of the two thousand eighteen consolidated annual performance evaluation report and adopt resolution number nine-four-zero-dash-nineteen submitting said report to the U.S. Department of HUD Housing and Urban Development.
Vice Mayor and Council, this item is just to approve the paper to submit to HUD.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Items six and seven are companion items of what we tabled for the hearing. So, do we have a motion to table this?
Do we need to read them?
Sure. Consider ordinance, number, I'm sorry, agenda item six, consider ordinance number nine-two-six-dash-nineteen, extending the corporate limits of the city of Moore, Oklahoma, providing for the designation of the territory included in such extension, providing for the repeal of all ordinances or part of ordinance is in conflict therewith, providing for the zoning of properties in the annexed territory, providing for severability thereof, providing for repealer, and declaring an emergency.
Motion to table, second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Item tabled. Agenda item number seven, consider approval of the emergency provision for ordinance number nine-two-six-dash-nineteen to be immediately necessary for the preservation of the peace, health, safety, and public good of the city of Moore and inhabitants thereof. The provisions of this ordinance be put to full force and effect. An emergency is hereby declared to exist by reason whereof this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force and effect and after the date provided herein as provided by law.
Motion to table, second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the table and vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item tabled. Agenda item number eight, consider the final plat of Mahogany Hills Estate, section one, located in the east, port, east half of section thirty-six, Township ten north, range three west, being north of Indian Hills Road and west of Bryant Avenue. Application by Gray C, LLC Mike Gray. Planning Commission recommended approval eight zero, and this is in Ward one.
Vice Mayor and Council, this property is located west of South Broadway Avenue and north of Indian Hills Road. The property was rezoned to R one in June of two thousand nineteen. The applicant is requesting a final plat for thirty-four single-family lots on twenty-seven point five acres, which is a dwelling unit density of about one per acre. Access is proposed by divided median entryway from South Broadway Avenue. Public water will be extended to serve the site, and septic systems are being proposed for each lot. There is no FEMA regulated floodplain located on the property. Stormwater detention for this development is required, and this section of the development includes two detention areas, both on the west side of the property. The Envision Moore twenty forty plan calls for this location to be open space residential. The plan describes open space residential as existing rural residential home sites and neighborhoods where homes are developed on large lots or where overall density is capped due to significant open space. Because the overall densities of this addition are about one per acre, and the open space amenities are significant, staff does believe that this site conforms with the requirements and the overall goals and recommendations of the plan. Staff recommends approval of this final plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have questions. I noticed that we're not requiring them to have sidewalks outside of the neighborhood.
We, let's see.
I see because this is not located within a quarter of a mile of the school or park, there's no requirement for sidewalk?
Correct. Usually on the outskirts of the urbanized area, we require a fee in lieu of sidewalk, because those are the streets that are likely to be improved as time goes on to four lanes, in which case we would rip, basically we rip everything out from right-of-way to right-of-way. And because this is not located in a close proximity to a school or shown on the comp plan as a trail location, a fee in lieu of a sidewalk was recommended.
Do you know how far away from Broadmore it is, or would a bus serve that area? I thought it was a one point five miles from the school.
Right, I, let me look at them. So, this would actually be located less than a mile from the school, but over a quarter of a mile.
The kids would be walking.
So, they'd be walking.
They'd be walking.
Because if it's under a mi-
It's under one point five is what Moore's school has.
So, that's problematic confusion on sidewalks.
Yeah, I, I would like to check to see if a bus drives there. I just know that I get, that's one of my biggest complaints that I get is student, kids who are walking without sidewalks.
No, I appreciate Danielle for noticing.
I think that that's a decision that council can make. If you feel that it is important to have a sidewalk in that location, then we can certainly require that on the construction plans. There, there's plenty of right-of-way to put in a sidewalk, because it's currently two lanes, artillery roadway, so there's plenty of room. But it would stop at their property lot.
You would just be talking about, we, thirty, forty feet of sidewalk?
Yeah.
Because you only have one entrance.
Right.
And there's not sidewalks after that.
And then you have no sidewalks for-
But then you don't have no sidewalks after that.
The kids would be walking, that's my other thing.
Yeah, but what, what-
I know, I see.
Yeah, but there's no sidewalks up here, so, you have about thirty feet of sidewalk.
You only be talking about that much sidewalk.
So, how do you fix that?
Because that's the only entrance on Broadway.
And as it stands, they pay a fee in lieu of providing a sidewalk?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think we could, if, if something developed on the other side of this, then we could pull in that section.
Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, was there a sidewalk or no sidewalk?
I think we said we'd be fine with that if they're paying for it, because eventually we'd end up probably redoing.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham. Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Agenda number nine, consider the final plat for the Waters Phase Three located in the south half of section one, Township ten north, range three west, being north of northeast twenty-seventh Street and east of Eastern Avenue. Application by Premium Land LLC, paper with lock. Planning Commission recommended approval eight zero, Ward two.
Vice Mayor and Council, this property is located to the east of northeastern Avenue and north of northeast twenty-seventh Street. The property was rezoned to R one in January of two thousand sixteen. The applicant is requesting a final plat for seventy-one single-family lots on twenty-one acres. That totals approximately three dwelling units per acre. Access is proposed by northeast twenty-fifth Street and northeast thirty-third Terrace. Those are both existing residential streets in the Waters Addition, section one and two. Utilities will be extended to serve the site. There is no FEMA regulated floodplain located on the property. On-site detention is required, and is provided with three retention ponds plowed as common areas. And these common areas contain approximately four acres of open space. The Envision Moore twenty forty plan calls for this location to be urban residential. Land uses allowed in urban residential allow for single-family detached units up to seven dwelling units per acre. Because the overall densities are around three units per acre and the inclusion of the open space, staff believes that this site does conform with the requirements of the urban density land use and the overall goals and recommendations of the plan. Staff recommends approval of this final plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does this density match that too?
Yes, yes.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Agenda item number ten, consider rezoning application number R Z eight dash nine eight six, located in the northwest quadrant of section twenty-two, Township ten north, range three west, being south of southwest Fourth Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue, from C two Neighborhood Commercial District to C two PUD Neighborhood Commercial District Plan Unit Development, and approve ordinance number nine-two-seven-dash-nineteen, application by TBF LLC Sharon Schiffler. Planning Commission recommended approval eight zero, this is Ward thirty.
Vice Mayor and Council, items number ten and eleven on your agenda are companion items. This subject site is located south of southwest Fourth Street on the east side of Santa Fe Avenue. It is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to develop the property for ten commercial buildings with zero lot lines and a common access drive and parking. To accommodate the desired layout of the buildings, a rezoning as a planned unit development is required. Public water is available along South Santa Fe, and sewer is available within the Plaza Towers Addition along the eastern boundary of the site. There is no FEMA-designated floodplain located on the property. The property will be accessed from South Santa Fe. Individual buildings will be accessed through a private access drive. The applicant is utilizing a planned unit development to achieve higher densities of land use. By utilizing a PUD, the city may relax certain intensity requirements in exchange for amenities that would not otherwise be required. The PUD proposal includes the following amenities. All buildings will be utilizing a residential architectural elements, and pictures of the buildings, or something that would be like the buildings, would be on page one seventy-seven and one seventy-eight of your packet. The increased landscaping with a minimum of two trees and two shrubs per lot, thirty percent open space, including a ten-foot wide landscape buffer along Santa Fe Avenue, and two detention ponds. And there would be one monument sign allowed per building to be located within the Business Center complex, no taller than four feet and twenty-five square feet in length. The Envision Moore twenty forty plan calls for this location to be employment-mixed-use. Developments within this category should be designed to mimic a campus or office park setting, setting compatible with residential uses. With the small scale of this business park and the residential architectural style, staff believes that this application is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. I need to note a couple of changes and clarifications that were made at the Planning Commission meeting. Number one is that the applicant would like to limit his buildings to two-story in height versus the one-story in height. And the second item is that 85% of the structures would be brick, rocks, or stone materials. Because this site is located in a developed part of Moore, surrounded by neighborhood commercial and residential land uses, this PUD for small-scale business park is not anticipated to negatively affect the area. Staff recommends approval of this application and the preliminary plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So did the Planning Commission address the two score?
They did, yes.
And they're okay with it?
Yes.
Even the back two, the backup to the neighborhood?
Yes, there was a larger landscape buffer area that is located along the east boundary line. I believe it's 35 feet. It could be larger than that, I can't actually read the small print here. But there is a buffer between the buildings and the neighborhood.
Are these businesses going to be 8 to 5 businesses?
I'm sorry?
Are they 8 to 5 businesses, like office businesses, or might they be other?
They are more than office businesses, but there's nothing in here that would be like a convenience store, fast food restaurant. It's not intended to be a high-intensity commercial center. It's a business park, yes.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in second, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Agenda item number 11, consider the preliminary plat for Santa Fe Executive Center, located in the northwest quarter of Section 22, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of southwest 4th Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue. Application by TBF LLC, Planning Commission recommended approval of 8-3.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion in second, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham. Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Agenda item number 12, consider authorizing the purchase of two 2020 Ford Escape vehicles from Bill Knight Ford off the state contract in the total amount of $51,674, each using budgeted funds.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted item. The intent is to replace two Ford F-150 trucks. They both have over 100,000 miles, many hours in the shop over the years. It would be one code enforcement truck and one truck for the stormwater manager. What is being requested to be purchased are two identical Ford Escapes that should give us better gas mileage and fit in with the work that they do better.
Motion for, second.
Motion in second, just a clarification, the 51,000, is that total or each?
That is total.
That's total, so it's not each.
No.
I was gonna say, I'm looking at it, it doesn't look like that. Okay, motion in a second, would you please call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Agenda item 13, consider awarding bid number 1900-22, waterslide addition of the station aquatic facility to Branco Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of $1,093,000.
Vice Mayor and Council, this item is to award Branco Enterprises, Inc. to construct a new waterslide at the station aquatic facility. There were 30 bids total, and they were the lowest bid. They have experience working on similar projects, and they have a good referral. This is a budgeted item that was part of the quarter cent sales tax. I ask you to approve this item as it would be a great addition to the station, addition to our aquatic facility, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Agenda item 14, consider adopting resolution number 939-19, authorizing the City of Moore to submit an application to the Association of Civil and Urban Government, ACOG, for the Clean Air Grant for public sector needs.
Vice Mayor and Council, the city has received the Clean Air Grant from ACOG for the last few years. This grant application would fund the cost of converting a new sanitation route truck to CNG. The total amount of the grant request is 64,974. Application is due December 16th, and the city should receive notification of award in February.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Agenda item 15, consider approval of a contract with Downey Contracting LLC for construction management services for the Old Town Park using the quarter cent sales tax.
Vice Mayor and Council, my request for qualifications for construction management for Old Town Park was issued September 25th of 2019. The city received four responses on October 29th. Staff and TAP Architecture reviewed the four submittals and selected two semifinalists. Interviews of the semifinalists by a committee consisting of staff and TAP took place on November 14th. Through an interview and scoring process, the committee selected Downey Contracting. The construction management fee will be 8% of the guaranteed maximum price, which is the total of all bids. Once all bids have been received, an amendment will be made to this contract to include the guaranteed maximum price. Staff recommends approval of the contract with Downey Contracting LLC.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Agenda item 16, consider ordinance number 925-19, amending Part 8 Health and Nuisances, Chapter 12 Medical Marijuana, Section 8-1201 Definitions, Section 12-1202 General Advancements, 8-1203 Medical Marijuana Dispensary, 8-1204 Commercial Medical Marijuana Brewing Facility, 8-1205 Commercial Medical Marijuana Processing Facility, 8-1206 Medical Marijuana Testing Laboratory Facility, 8-1207 Medical Marijuana Research Facility, adding sections 8-1208 Medical Marijuana Education Facility, 8-1209 Medical Marijuana Brewing for Personalies, 8-1210 Legal Nonconforming Clause Providing for Repealer Providing for Severability and Declaring an Emergency.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is an ordinance that is amending our prior medical marijuana ordinance. What we have done is we have amended some of the definitions. We have added some of the new licenses that have been allowed through the unity bill. The biggest addition, though, that I need to point out to everybody is it addresses some of the concerns that were brought up last time. There are two scenarios that we addressed in here, and I'll go over them with you briefly. The legal nonconforming clause, what we're talking about here is two scenarios. One is the instance where the business is currently in business. They already have a state license. They came here, let's, for example, it's a grow operation, they have a grow operation, but they have never came to the city to fill out a certificate of occupancy. Now they are required from the state to renew their license, they need to come to the city here. Well, the problem is, is that maybe they weren't zoned correctly. So one possible scenario is we are grandfathering them in. If they come into the city before January 1 of 2020, they will be grandfathered in, and on that certificate of compliance, where it says zoning, they will be legal nonconforming. The second scenario is more where there is somebody that is, I am planning on having an established location, but they are hesitant to do so because they think, well, maybe they're not going to get approved by the city because the zoning is not correct. So what we have on this one is if they apply for the certificate of occupancy before the end of the year, they will be grandfathered in for the purposes of zoning, but they still have to provide to us their state license by July 1. That gives them more than enough time. The state is right now saying 90 days, but I didn't want to put down March 1, because if it was March 4 or something, there'd be problems. So I gave them more than enough time to come in, provide to us their state license, then they will be grandfathered in. I think that that eliminates the, what was raised last time we were here. Like I said, the definitions are changed, we've added some of the new licenses that are granted, and we actually spelled out the exact zoning regulations for the dispensaries, before we just put down wherever a, where a dispensary is able to be at, we actually listed out the actual zoning regulations. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Did this address the growing issue that we talked about the last time?
It should, yes, because it covered both scenarios. I believe last time there was somebody that had an existing business, then there was somebody else that had plans to have an addition over here, that does address that. I did speak to one of them, and I believe, and they were, they said that this would be okay.
And we're still in conformance with state law?
Yes, we are. And there's one other thing, too. The fees are going to be decreased as well. There was, concern was raised last time about that. What we decided to do is go with exactly what Norman has, which was 600 for dispensary and 900 for all others. I am still working on the, on the fee schedule, I'm hoping to have that to you at the next meeting, because there were some other changes that needed to be done, but that'll be addressed at the next, at the next meeting. If there's any questions or anything else?
Jeff Richardson?
Vice Mayor and Council, I'll keep this very brief. As being a business owner who's affected by all these ordinances, especially the zoning and whatnot, I read through these and found them to be excellent, very helpful, and I think that they are more than fair, and I would just urge that they're accepted as they are.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion in second, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries.
Brian, thank you for all your work on that. All you guys did a lot of work on it.
Yes, Brian, thank you very much.
Okay, item 17, consider approval of emergency provision for ordinance number 925-19, it being immediately necessary for the preservation of the peace, health, safety, and the public good of the City of Moore and the inhabitants thereof, that the provisions of this ordinance be put into full force and effect. An emergency is hereby declared to exist by reason where this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force and effect from and after the date provided herein as provided by law.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is simply the emergency provision of the previous ordinance, and I ask that it be approved.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion in second, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Agenda item 18, consider ordinance number 928-19, amending Part 13 Public Safety, Chapter 5 Emergency Telephone and Alarm Systems, Section 13-503 Registration, 13-505 Criminal Liability False Alarms, 13-506 Notice of False Alarms, 13-507 Instruction As to the Operation of Systems, 13-508 Emergency Notifications, Maintenance of Records Designated Personnel, 13-510 Minimal System Requirements, 3-512 Notification of Test, 13-513 Automatic Dialing Devices and Pre-Recorded or Programmed Message Alarm System Requirements, 13-514 Notice of Disruption of Service, 13-515 Police or Fire Inspection of Alarm Systems, 13-516 Prompt Response of Agents or Employees, 13-517 Alarm Monitoring by Police Department, Cost Enrollment Fees Providing for Repealer and Providing for Severability.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a much-needed update to our emergency phone and alarm system ordinance. When I was looking at this, it appears that this was originally written in the early 90s. And with the advances of technology, a lot of this was outdated. So what we did was, actually had some people from dispatch came to me and said that there were some problems with this. So we took a look at it, as you can tell, there's a lot of it just being completely deleted out of there. What we're going to be doing is, the key thing here is that there will no longer be an alarm permit registration or fee. Reason for that, what we're going to have now is part of the certificate of occupancy for a business, when they update their information, that information is going to be shared with dispatch. Right now, there's two different, there's so many different forms going on that no way is communicating amongst each other. Dispatch had far, it was very rare that they would even have up-to-date information. I think with this new procedure, I think they're going to have much more up-to-date information, because whenever there is a new business going on, they'll have a certificate of occupancy that'll be shared with dispatch. What we're going to do is to offset the lack of fees that we're used to be able to receive from this, we're going to increase the certificate of occupancy fee, I think it's from 15, I believe it's to $40, that's part of the fee schedule that I'm working on right now, but we're going to offset that at the next meeting. Like I said, each apartments can be sharing information with each other, so I think there'll be much better flow of information this way. Any questions?
So all of these pertain to commercial?
Commercial and residential.
Residential.
Yes, it is, yes.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Resess the City Council Meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Agenda item number 19, the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve amendments of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting, held November 18, 2019. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for F-1820 in the amount of $914,358.15.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Agenda item number 20, consider approval of an excess public officials and employment practices liability policy with Stratford Insurance Company, a division of Western World Insurance Company, had invented best rating with an A Excellent Rating for $31,082. The 12.2 rate increase over last year with Glenn Harrison Associates as agent.
Vice Mayor and Council, Dan Kramer from Glenn Harrison Associates is our agent. He has shopped the market and is recommending a policy with Stratford Insurance, which is a division of the Western World Insurance. The premium is $31,082, which is a 12.2% increase over last year. When I asked him about the increase, he says it's primarily due to the size of our budget. Our budget has increased, and that is the reason for that, that increase. And I will point out that last year, there was no increase at all last year, and I would recommend approval of this policy. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Agenda item 21, consider approval of a property and contents insurance policy through OMAG and excess property and contents insurance policy through Homeland Insurance Company of New York, excess flood insurance through Voider Endemity Insurance Company, and physical damage coverage for the city's sanitation truck and mobile command center through Great American Insurance Company with Russell Hollingsworth of Dillingham Insurance as agent.
Vice Mayor and Council, our agent, Russell Hollingsworth, has shopped the market for our property insurance needs as well as coverage for our sanitation trucks. The total premium for this is $418,568. This is a little bit more than a 15% decrease than it was last year. If you had a chance to go through the materials, the sanitation trucks, the premium for that Vice Mayor and Council, our agent, Russell Hollingsworth, has shopped the market for our property insurance needs, as well as coverage for our sanitation trucks. The total premium for this is four hundred, eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. This is a little bit more than a fifteen percent decrease than it was last year. If you had a chance to go through the materials, the sanitation trucks, the premium for that went up slightly. It is because of the additional emergency management vehicle that was purchased throughout the year last year, so that has gone up. The decrease, the big thing we need to point out on that is the deductible is now fifty thousand dollar deductible for all perils with OMAG, that is the only option that we had, but it's a whole lot better than what we had before, which is five hundred thousand for the wind and hail. So I think for large type of peril, we're going to be much better off than what we have now. The oiler machinery, there used to be a separate policy for that, that is now included in this as well. So all in all, the total decrease was, like I said, fifteen percent, and there is a chance that if we have no claims, that we could actually get a ten percent rebate on top of what our premium was at the end of the year as well. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer that. And Russell is here as well, if there's any questions you'd like to ask him.
Motion for, second.
Motion and second, would you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. This time we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Agenda item twenty-two, consent docket. Item A, receive and approve amendments of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting, held November eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Agenda item B, approve and ratify the claims and expenditures for Fway nineteen twenty in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and second, would you call for the vote please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. This time we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene and reconvene the city council meeting. Agenda item twenty-three, it's new business. Item A, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. I have Jeff Richardson sign up to speak. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Item B, items from the city council or trustees?
Brooks, I've got compliments on the city declarations, I appreciate you guys.
I have a lot.
Looks good.
From a couple people that are a little hard to please, so.
Yeah, that's true.
It's a big hit.
The bridge looks awesome. Get some comments from probably more people from outside our city than actually inside the cities.
That's very good. Okay. Items from the city or trust manager?
Vice Mayor and Council, got a busy Saturday of activities this upcoming Saturday. We've got the shop with the cop that starts, and I appreciate our police department and all the efforts that they make to help Christmas. We're having breakfast with Santa at the station, and then this Saturday night is the Christmas spectacular. So it was a great event last year, and the weather's supposed to be good, so I hope everybody can come on.
Agenda item twenty-four adjournment?
Salute, second.
Motion and second, would you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, we're adjourned.